Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Come on, y'all, we do better than that. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'd like to call South County Council for regular meeting for Tuesday, March eleventh. Will you please stand for the invitation and remain standing for the next meeting?
Let us pray. Our dear kind heavenly Father, we acknowledge you as the one and whom we therefore have our salute. We know that earth is yours and the earth is there on it. And we thank you for allowing us to be over a part of this earth that you have appointed us to serve. We invite your presence as we begin our meeting today and ask that you abide among us and help us to do your will according to the agenda that is set before us. Please bless every family that is represented here and bless, continue to bless, our men and women who are serving in uniforms and especially those that are serving in harm swing. Continue to bless this whole country that we will recover from anything that is presented before us to need harm and that we will be able to flourish as we've always blessed this country. We ask y'all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'm sure if I give any changes to the agenda. Please pray, Lieutenant.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Don't give a two-hour agenda, no further discussion. Here are none, our members, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The agenda is approved. We have a motion to approve our minutes of our February twentieth meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any further discussion? Here are none, our minutes are approved. Man you smell.
This is first reading, Foreign Ordinance Amendment specifically OA twenty-five oh one, this pertains to screening standards for used motor vehicle parts, merchant wholesalers. So this is an application to specifically amend Article five, E three G of the county's zoning development standards ordinance to, in order to add an earthen berm and an earthen berm and fence wall combinations to be established, special design criteria for the use I just stated, that's used motor vehicle parts, merchant wholesalers with onsite vehicles handling and or storage, and this is specific to light industrial warehouses. So really, this is taking a chunk of text applying to this that applies specifically to this use that relates to the provision of a seven-foot screening fence or screening wall around vehicle storage areas or other sensitive areas of such a use and providing a little bit more clarification, specifically allowing for an earthen berm to be used to meet those screening standards or a combination of an earthen berm and a fence or wall provided that the height is at least seven feet. Happy to answer any questions. Oh, a planning commission recommended approval.
Those are true first reading. It's been moved in properly, second, that we have first reading on OA twenty-five oh one, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. On this amendment twenty-five oh one, first reading passed.
Yes, sir. Correct. Next item is third reading on a planning development amendment provision for property at Highway five point one and specifically thirteen ninety-one, Hampton Road. Mr. Chairman, there's been no additional changes.
No, for the reason. So if you go first, I thank you. Y'all got some money here. We have a motion in the second on plan development number O six oh five. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Plan development six zero six zero five passed. Now, this is third reading. Oh, I think we have a presentation. I see a lot of members from the Middle East Father Coalition here. Mr. Ivey?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here again for you. I know the last time we came was a bit while, but just wanted to give you some good, great news on our program, but first want to begin by saying thank you. I think back in two thousand sixteen, our program was chosen, one of the programs throughout the state to expand its services to South County, and I was related because this is my home. And so since then, we've had made strides to help those fathers and families throughout our community, and we want to report on what our findings have come about. And first, I just want to make this, this is important because I think a lot of times we see in the news, news articles, interviews through radio stations about certain stories that we, that expose our work with individuals, but that wouldn't have been possible without you, the body of county council, our administrator, Mr. Nixon, your support behind us and the residents of this community, you need to know that. Our public-private partnership has been immense and successful, and a lot of times we don't see a success because it's someone's private story, and I think that's the missing link. And so we want to tell a story by, through our data, and I have invited alumni of our program who is financially successful, and I'll let him tell his own story, but I'll move past that now.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Terrence with the site manager here at the fathered. I'm just going to go over like a program overview, overview of what we covered. If you need any other questions about whatever we cover, I can answer that right away. Overall, we deal with healthy relationship. You know, without the healthy relationship, kids today, they go astray, but now we have, we work with the fathers on their healthy relationship, work with them on parenting, because parenting is a key component we can see. Without both parents being involved, what we throw results are. We work on economic mobility, which is the biggest thing, a lot of people don't, they make money, but they just don't know how to handle it. We work on health. One of the biggest components we see now is the health part.
Real quick, we were asked to be a part of the trash cleanup for the county, and we have been a part of that whole process. We have pictures, we have constituents that provide help with picking up trash from our community. Every time we have a trash cleanup, we are a part of that, so just want to make sure we noted that with you all.
Um, dad's facts, um, with the dad actively involved, kids are more likely to be better in school, they're more likely to not repeat, they're just more likely to be better and healthier in school because of their father's involvement. I know even with me, I go to my kid's school all the time, catch my guard, they don't know what to do. It helps improve their self-esteem. You know, we have, we have to encourage them, make sure that we making them want to be better, want, make them want to be better so they can go to school or pursue a career that they want to pursue. Mental health, their mental health is better because we're actively involved, we're taking some stressors out that we may run into in life. Economic stability, when they're both parents working together, kids are more likely not to live in poverty. And safer communities with dad actively involved, now you can control the kids, but they're now, they have both parents actively involved, now they know what health was right and what's wrong, they have it coming from both ends, both parents are trying to encourage their children to do right.
Oh, thanks, man. Hi, I'm Andrew with the fathered office. I'm the director of dad and technology, I'm just going to take you through just a couple of key points in dad's case over the past couple of years, what we've been able to do in Sumter. So like Terrence said, there are a couple facets that we really focus on rather than being finding employment for people who come into our program who are unemployed or underemployed and trying to get them to better sustain themselves and their family. And over the past couple of years, we've been able to help three hundred and seventy-two individuals find a, either a better paying job or a job in general that comes to our doors, and another two hundred and sixty-four complete job skills training just here in Sumter. And out of those two hundred and sixty-four, eighteen of those were actually professional certifications, cert Morse college. We started a program with them about a year, year and a half ago, getting professional certifications online for our guys here in Sumter, trying to keep all of that here locally. And again, we focus on families, strengthening families through strengthening fathers, and out of that, we've had three hundred and nineteen fathers who come into our program that said that they are dissatisfied with the amount of time they spend with their children. Three hundred and nineteen have reported to us that they've increased the time they've spent and now have a better relationship with their kids. And two hundred and ninety-three who said that they had a neutral or worse relationship with the mother have reported a better relationship, so better co-parenting all around. The number that I would like to lean on is the number of participants we get from DSS. So since two thousand nineteen, we've served a hundred and three, and out of those hundred and three, eighty-five have either gotten to keep their kids in the home or had their kids return because of our intervention. So that's an eighty-three percent success rate. I know we can't help everybody, but I think eighty-three percent is pretty staggering. So since, over the past couple of years, we've served just over a thousand individuals here in Sumter and positively affected twenty-five hundred kids just in this community. And again, I think the numbers speak for themselves, the impact of our work. And here's something that I know you guys always like to hear. Five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars of paid child support from guys in our program who may have not been paying any child support before they entered, and a total of three million one hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars saved in incarceration costs from the county. So I know this is a big number that you guys love, I always make sure to put it in the presentation just for you guys. And speaking of incarcerated individuals, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Terrence Osborne to speak more about that, Mr. Other jail. Just, yeah, just my.
I have a long chat, Osborne, um, we have a group program that we're introducing to you guys, um, we now go into the Sumter Division Detention Center and we offer parenting, we offer healthy relationships, and we offer economic ability groups now within side the detention centers and certainly those correctional centers. For the detention center, we are in conjunction with DSS, we help those that are having child support issues or they've been sentenced to, you know, six months to a year for child support, we go in and, you know, we give them these programs and once they get out, we try to help them get employment, you know, guide them in different, a different path instead of not being able to pay child support. When it comes to Turberville, we go in and we're talking to the wives, the young fathers, all the fathers that are twenty-seven to twenty-six years old and younger. Um, a lot of these guys are about to be released. Once they're released, we're trying to get them back into society and with a different mindset of, you know, being in their child's lives, going back into being productive citizens within the community, just, you know, giving them those guidance and the services and the tools and skills that they need to become better citizens. When you look at this picture, this is, this is the why, this is why we do everything that we do. We do this for the children. Um, periodically, we have father-child activities where we have pumpkin carving, we take them fishing, we take them skating, we do all different types of things for fathers to be able to engage with their children. Um, above all, the biggest thing that we're trying to do is to make fathers become better fathers, you know, we try to engage the family so the family can become better and also become a better society overall.
And with that last piece, I did bring a few friends of mine, I know we run a sort of time, Mr. Carl Burris, alumni of our program, we, we, we got him kicking and screaming, he didn't want nothing to do with it, and before we do it, he was in love with it, and so I, just one minute, please.
That's all, it's going to take, I'm Carl Burris, um, actually the first recipient of the Father of the Year.
Yeah.
I went in, they said, right, I went in kicking and screaming, didn't believe that I needed to be a part of this program, I was a great dad and all the rest of that, that was my belief, but after following, following the instructions of the program, Mr. Ivey and all, and the staff, the relationship between me and my children and my family has got, matter of fact, I got nine great, nine great kids and three great grandkids, and I'm a champion for the Fatherhood Program.
I don't know if Jamie Campbell came to support us, I don't know if you'd like to, or whoever, but thank you all for all that you do to support.
Oh, you sit down, brother.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Mama here with him in the house. Excuse the interruption, but I helped raise this young man. I'm eighty-three, eighty-five, and he's, you want to tell you eighty-two?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six. I rode seventy, twenty-six with his grandmama and his mama in Charleston, got stuck on twenty-six trying to get back home with him and his aunt, sister in the car with us, but I talked with him today referring somebody, keep giving him money, I keep referring. We keeping him out of jail, and I don't know if he knew I was sitting there and I, and called to ask him, was I going to speak, and I'd say, no, I was just, oh, Fatherhood, amen.
Amen.
We need more people like these. I just was referring him one today, and I talked with the guy yesterday, he said, I'm already in the program. I said, well, I'm going to check it out, make sure you go, because sometimes we refer people and they don't show up. God bless you, keep doing what you're doing, and I'm going to keep supporting you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, sir. Great program, thank you. Thank you.
Ordinance number twenty-five ten eighteen, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this is third reading on ordinance twenty-five twenty, twenty eighteen, there's changes to second reading, obviously, the high parts, high spots are authorized more of our fines, authorized more of our lighter participation that is the principal ground of the total debt, not to forty million dollars. It incorporates the ballot question, the capitalized sales tax law, you know, hopefully paid us off, it authorizes burn formant, that is buy council, dispose of council, tax council, and authorized covers municipal advisors and financial advisor. Do you have any questions?
Pleasure, counsel. Mr. Carl Burris. It's been moved in properly, second, that we have third reading, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed. Ordinance number twenty-five ten eighteen passed. Ordinance number twenty-five ten nineteen.
This is second reading on ordinance twenty-five ten nineteen, and the purpose of this ordinance is to restructure the Sumter City County Litter Advisory Board, and what it will do is replace the representative from the Sumter County Sheriff's Office with one litter control officer and replace the representative from the city of Sumter Police Department with a litter control officer. For a second reading, second, it's been moved in properly, second, that we approve the second reading for twenty-five ten nineteen.
Question. I do have a question. I do, I do have a question.
Oh, yeah. Yes, second.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to ask, you know, you're replacing the litter, you're replacing an officer with an officer, one from city, one from county, is that what you're doing?
Right, when the, uh, Sumter City County Litter Control Officer Board stated there were no litter control officers, we use the county, oh, excuse me. So at that time, the sheriff had a representative on the board, and the chief of police had a representative on the board. Now, Sumter County has a couple of litter control officers, the city has at least one. So the idea was those people who were throwing those officers should be on the litter advisory board, so made that happen. In seven weeks, that those two, those litter control officers would replace the representative the sheriff appointed and representative the chief of police appointed.
And so there's just one officer for the whole county?
I think we have two litter control officers, one from the county advisory board.
I'm sorry?
There's only one, there's only a litter advisory board, and we have two litter officers.
And, um, and when someone, when someone cites a problem out in the unincorporated area, they can call that officer, not call them.
Yes, now, our sheriff investigates the litter, sees it being determined, being determined, where the litter came from, who may have put it there.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is there a reason why both offices weren't put on the board?
There's only one, there's only one appointment. We could change this, but right now, there was only one, we have a set number of people, so we were exchanging it one for one. I mean, it could be helpful for both to be on.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, we had a problem with those both being able to attend meetings just because that was their codes enforcement officers, which doesn't really relate to litter, and they were out of there.
He's talking about both.
And one of them, and one of them resigned, one that was on there no longer, so.
He's talking about the litter officers.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about that.
He's talking about putting both litter officers on that.
Oh.
I mean, what would be the problem with that?
They're there to represent the county on that board, we also have representation from council on that as well as myself, so basically, you only need one person to report out on what the county is doing as the litter advisory board, you have one officer from the city identifying what the city is doing in their litter control efforts. Um, but obviously, when we have a program, everybody's on board, all the officers, so it's just a matter of having that one person designated on the board and quite frankly, reporting out on the activities, which we didn't have in the past.
So what I'm thinking is that both those offices have different experiences when they're out in the field, which may be open.
We have one officer that's basically supervisor over the other officer, and they all work for the public works director, the public works director also attends his meetings, so I don't think it's going to be an issue of anything not being reported out. I think it's more about balance too, making sure that we have the appropriate balance. This is a joint board with the city and the county, so we have equal representation, and then as far as the citizen membership, there's an equal amount of city representatives as well as county representatives, this, this, this guardian Green is there on that board and sees how it functions, so it's not a matter of not getting information or not sharing ideas, we have plenty of opportunities. I think it's more about balance.
So, Mr. Chairman, I reserve the right to come back to this, as you know, litter is something that I'm very focused on, and so several of you probably saw my post recently about litter, and I'm just as hard on the community as I am focused on council, making sure that we cover this issue because it is a problem in our community and it depreciates home values, it encourages the wrong kind of people to relocate to our community, and it disencourages people from moving to this area. As a matter of fact, I have a letter in my file right now talking about litter from a lady who moved down here from up north, and her comment is that the litter in Sumter is the worst that she has ever seen, and so I am laser focused on that, and I just think all the bodies that are available to address this issue necessary, and we've been talking about this issue for a number of years, at least five years that I am aware of, and I just think we have to be extremely aggressive in dealing with this issue. For the moment, Mr. Chairman, I'll sit with that, but I reserve the right to come back. Any further comments? Come on, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, ordinance number twenty-five ten twenty.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, twenty-five ten twenty is about a little piece of property on Given Street, and that's, let me pull up, uh, the hash area, the hash area is the area that's part of a paper street, it's only on paper, it's been used, it's been developed, and the street has bought the properties in Fort Manchester, helps to get that little piece of system that their government can help create that cul-de-sac at the bottom of the street.
We approve the second reading. This is moved in properly, second, that we have second reading, any discussion? Here are none, our members, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Second reading passed. Mr. Brian. Brookfield Road.
Brookfield Road, ordinance number twenty-five ten twenty-one, it's another paper street, that's going forward to that, you know, picture how it looks on a plaque, it doesn't go anywhere, it's not been developed, flip over to the, you know, photograph now. You see, it's at the bottom of the screen, um, and it's, it has trees in it, it's not been developed, it has every sentence, it's just on the paper, and the developer owns the property above it and below it, like a hattie that put all this property together and do a project of some kind.
We approve, second, second reading moved in properly, second, that we have second reading, any discussion? Here are none, our members, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Second reading is approved. The county fiscal, tax, and property committee, in the, all members present, we did have an executive session where we received information, information only, no action was taken.
Uh, we met our hour, and all were there, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Councilor Warren, this is a project that he's been, been excited about, so I'm going to let you introduce what we're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the audience, um, as, as you know, those of you who are rural areas, there are a number of roads that are intransportable for access from emergency vehicles, whether it's fire, EMS, sheriff's department, UPS, home health delivery, um, and some of the county council has decided that, um, they want to protect their citizens, and so we are engaging in a conversation about how to help those people. My assessment of today's committee meeting is that there is some strong progress made in terms of how we address that, the best way to confront some of these roads that are almost impassable in some scenarios, particularly in rural areas, particularly in District One and, um, the council lady from Shala to my right, and so council has decided that we'd like to provide some relief in those areas, and we made some good progress in that area today. I suspect, um, between the next couple meetings, we will probably come up with a plan and a criteria to begin the process of addressing some of these roads, and I'm very excited about that, and I think I would be remiss if I did not express appreciation to council for recognizing that and wanting to put in the work to try and address this issue. So with that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my comments. Thank you. Reports from county council, any other meetings?
Chairman, I would just like to add to, and I would be remiss to not say anything because that really affects my area of the county as well, and, and council on the gardeners and, and Mr. Baker's district, um, those roads have been a problem for many years, and we are really looking forward to, we've already come together and want to work together to find solutions to the problems that we have with our rural roads, and I'd also want to add that the staff that has done a lot of work to help us, we now, you know, a lot of times when our constituents call us, we know that we cannot go on private roads, but there's always a question as to whether the road is private or public, and there's a question about the color of the signs and, and changes that may have occurred over time. However, we have a listing that the staff has given us to show us by district. Um, however, we have a listing that the staff has given us to show us by district where our private roads are, um, that are dirt roads. And so, we do have something to work with. Um, when it rains, we know that somebody is having a hard time. And we are very concerned about that. And, um, and hopefully, as we continue with this process, we will find some answers. We just like to thank you for your patience and of course, endurance. I saw a hand right there, so that if you were injured, you would be saying, amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Right, I'll bring council attention to the, uh, upcoming events. That's it. And the public reports. Come now to county members, please. Report, Mr. Mason.
Oh, yes, I just want to remind council, um, it's appropriate after the conversation tonight. Next Saturday, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, which is the twenty-second, will be our annual kickoff of the Stash to Trash Program at the Civic Center. Um, it's going to be a really nice program. Public Works and a number of the other groups in Sumter have gone to great effort to try to put that program together at Civic Center. It's a kickoff for the community to get engaged and to become passionate about this effort to do their part, bring up our community. Um, we've all recognized that it's more than what we could do as a government unit to, to cover this issue. But certainly, working together with citizens and neighborhood groups, church groups, and schools will be heavily involved in this program on this date. Um, there's also some pretty, pretty nice prizes for those that might want to come and attend that. I think there, somebody's donated and giving away a four-wheeler, uh, in an effort to generate some interest. So, yeah, get out, do your part, that's March the twenty-second. I believe it starts at eleven eighty, it sounded like eleven to one. So, come on out, enjoy the, some activities at Civic Center and show your support for, uh, the litter efforts in Sumter County. I'll answer.
Come now to public comment portion of our agenda. Anyone wishing to speak to council? Uh, the members, it's up to three minutes comes to be made from the chairman. Anyone wishing to speak to council? Please proceed to the podium.
Chair, I may just apologize. I recognize we have some folks in Quinsen Extension here, and I just wanted to recognize them. I know they're in your program or on your list of activities. Uh, I might be why y'all showed up tonight. Uh, but these folks do us a wonderful job in Quinsen Extension. They are house open, they manage facilities. And, uh, they, I know they want to part of this program. You got some information? There's a date they're requesting for council to come, and we'd have luck or something. Uh, so you have that information? All right, all right.
That's all right. Again, anyone wishing to speak to council? I declare the public comment portion to be opened. Please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Lenny Casey. And my concern is about the elderly being able to ride RTA. I recently discovered that there are no bus services in accounting parts of Sumter County, in Pinewood. And it does for a port waiting member down in Shallow, there isn't much services. And how I discovered this is because I work with elderly. They need to get to the doctor. Sometimes, family members cannot take them. And so, they're stuck until a family member comes home. They should be able to leave home when they get ready using the public services. Come to Sumter, grocery shop, go to the doctor. So, as y'all are looking into these roadways, I'm suggesting that you're also looking to bus services out in the Four Potter County. Because at least if they could cast the bus to the doctor, then family members may be getting off from work. They can pick them up. But if they can't even get there, then that's a problem. But there, there is a need for the RTA, both. Um, I also discovered that Medicaid services, they don't go out in the far reaches of the county either. So, they need these services. So, as you look over the road situation, try to incorporate the bus services for them also. And we need benches. Because if you walk the way the bus stop is, you can't stand there while you're waiting on the bus. So, include, um, a bench for them to sit on while they're waiting on the bus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is closed. To adjourn. I will be properly scheduled that you return. And proper discussion. Chairman, now, on the bench, we raise our ayes.
Aye.